I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, to create the city council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take your role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mungar.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Jaworski.
Here.
Clute.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. What do we have?
United States of America, in this republic which stands one nation under God, in this world which is made for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
Copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the back counter as you walked in. And Mr. Rainbow, welcome. Your presentation tonight from Andrew Rainbow, Sarpy County Economic Development.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I got really hung my head on this whole for setup. But typically, we come and give quarterly updates of what's gone on in that quarter. I think last year maybe before we start coming, giving, coming to annual, what we're calling it, an ROI, return on your investment in us and Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. And of course, it was another great year for us despite the pandemic and another great year for Papillion specifically. And on the screen, you can see kind of a little report, a brief one pager that'll go over here. And that's really the extent of my presentation tonight. But you see, this year, we landed four projects across Sarpy County, and two of them were in Papillion. And those projects generated $262 million in capital investment, a thousand new jobs. We didn't have any retained jobs. It was, one was a spec building out in R and R Commerce Park. We've worked with R and R for several years now to help them get that project going. So every time they build a new building, we counted it as new investment for us. And then, so they've got that going. And then, of course, the big one, obviously, was Amazon, which, you know, if it was a regular year, we would've got to work together and see each other every day for quite a while, like we have in the past. But I know, the city, I just want to compliment the city. I heard nothing but phenomenal feedback from all the parties that we worked with in that. I know you guys did a lot more work specifically than we did. We are administering a $1.5 million grant from the state of Nebraska for their site and building development on that. So we're excited to get that going. But again, that was obviously the biggest project that we landed across the metro area this year. We also had three other prospect visits, so that's when prospects are coming from out of state to look at sites in Sarpy County. Three of the sites that were, three of those visits set foot in Papillion, I guess. So that's how we count that. And we had 16 opportunities overall that we were able to show Papillion sites for. And so we had 16 opportunities and 28 sites submitted. So you can see, we're almost, we're submitting almost two sites per project for Papillion. And typically, those have been buildings. We did a lot of the R and R buildings that are already up there, and then a few of those are sites as well. So we also spent $28,000, almost $29,000 on site due diligence in Papillion. We have a site down on 156 and Fairview Road, and it's actually part of Papillion and part of Springfield, so it'll be separated one day by 156th Street. But we continue to do site due diligence on that. We started in 2019. We did some more this year. And we're done with it now. We're kind of in a full-on marketing phase. So that site is a little outside of the current sewerable, not outside of the sewerable area, but it's going to take a little bit to get sewered to it. So we're also looking for maybe developers that would like to invest in that economic worth. And specifically in your community, other things that we've done, we had 20 business retention and expansion meetings, so those are where we go out and speak to businesses and try to help them grow or make sure we're identifying issues that might prevent them from growing. So we did 20 of those in Papillion specifically. We had 17 site development meetings about sites in Papillion's area, and 18 investor relation meetings. So that's basically where we go out and we talk to our investors, and eight of those reside here in Papillion. 12 business and community interactions, so those are other types of things that might constitute a full project, but it's ways that we interacted with businesses that are located in Papillion. And then nine business assistances, and that's where maybe we do a little bit more, but again, it's not a project that results in any capital investment or new jobs. So again, we just want to come out and thank you for your continued support. It's been a great partnership so far, and we continue to do great things. So I don't know if we're going to land another Amazon or Google or Facebook this year, but we'll keep trying. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions, Brad?
Appreciate the partnership. Thanks.
I agree. For coming out on a, well, it's a warm day. We had a 20-degree warm up, so.
It's all relative.
Things are coming out.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers, administrative report.
Thank you. The 2021 Spring Cleanup Days will be April 19th to 25th from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The COVID procedures that were implemented last year will be in place again for this cleanup. And more information can be found on the city's website related to the process and what materials can be dropped off. The United Cities of Sarpy County continues to meet and take positions on legislative bills for this year's session. Planning Director Mark Sturzma testified Lincoln today on behalf of the United Cities in opposition of LV 168, which is a bill that would eliminate any USID. And thank you, Mark, for your testimony. And then a quick update on the I-80, 192nd Street interchange. The first round of public outreach has been completed for the planning and environmental linkages, health study. The travel demand models are now being evaluated, and concepts that don't perform well in those models are being eliminated. The next community advisors group will be meeting in March, and council members will be given the opportunity to provide feedback at that time. And the study is on track to be completed in August. And then finally, just a reminder that there'll be an F and A committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. on March 2nd. Thank you.
Thanks. Quick update on the room. Probably next council meeting, we'll have sound reinforcement for everybody. There are a couple of pieces of equipment that are still needing to come in that are delayed, like everything with COVID. The supply chain's a little disrupted. So no promise for the next meeting, but it probably looks highly likely. And then you've noticed, we do have, the cameras have been installed in here too, so then we'll be able to go back to virtual if we need that. So thank you very much for doing all the work on that. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Gaines.
Here.
Second by Councilman Glover. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'd like to remove C-5.
C, C-5?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I remove C-4s, please?
What's that?
C-4.
C-4, C-4 and C-5? Okay. Let's pull. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C-4 and C-5.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. Item C-4, Resolution R 210020, a resolution to extend the contract for ultra-thin bond asphalt system, U-Valve, to McGanney Construction of Shawnee, Kansas, in the amount of $2,95,020. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Clute.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, Ms. Clute.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the other council members aware that I have received some discussions about this particular item, wanting to know what was going on and why the expenditure was being made. I think it's important that our citizens know that the intent of this is that this should protect our good streets and help us to prolong the life of the streets. Where it's already been laid, the residents that I've had a chance to talk to have seemed to like it. And so I am just grateful that this program is continuing forward. And after the discussions with two different people, they both were in agreement. So this was more informative than anything to let the other council members know that we, I have at least received discussions about it.
Well, I know this is televised. That's an important point for the education, so a little bit of history for folks. We used to have, and this is related to in-city road repair. Historically, we probably budgeted a number of years ago about $250,000 a year on road repair internally. Number of council members, led by Councilman Clute, was, were falling behind. We need to do more. There was a point in there, we doubled that to $500,000. And we did that for a few years, and still received some of the feedback. We're falling behind. We need to do more. And we spent some serious conversations as council of, how do you know what is the right amount, and is it not enough or too much? And Mr. Thompson, city engineer, led us to a system where the road could be mapped and the condition of the road could actually be identified based on some standards, and it was put into GIS. And for the first time, we had actual objective information of the conditions of the road. And then we could put a 10-year plan together to get everything up to standard and keep it at or above standard. And it was once we had that data, the investment jumped, last year was the first one, it jumped to $2 million, 2.1, somewhere in there. And so that, the first wave was done last year, and then this is funding the next years. But because it is a little bit of a different product, Mr. Thompson, if you want to come up and just give a couple of minute overview on the product and the benefit of it, I think it is a good point to educate.
Sure, no problem. Good evening. Jeff Thompson, City Engineer, Public Works Director. This product was predominantly used in the Kansas City market when we went down and did some tours and took a look at it. It's a much more, I guess, vigorous product as far as the binder that we use. It's not got with any water. It's very natural, provides a very thick seal course to the existing concrete surfaces as well as a wearing course that we expect to see probably 10 to 15 years of additional life out of the concrete.
Appreciate it. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. Next is item C-5, Resolution R 210021, a resolution toward the bid of 72nd Street and Applewood intersection improvements to Omaha Electric Service of Omaha, Nebraska, in the amount of $281,445.78. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I wanted this one removed because I think it's an important project, and it relates to another item that's on tonight's agenda, which is the last item. It's a project, from what I understand, that has been identified all the way back to 2007. It's to add signals at the intersection of Applewood and 72nd Street, just directly north of Highway 370. That's currently just a stop control intersection. Adding signals will allow for movements in all four directions to be safer. Obviously, in order to be able to install the signals, it requires some acquisition of property. We have one property owner that's not receptive to the certified appraised price that's been identified for this particular location. And so a couple things. One would be is that this is a six-month project, from what I understand, requires it to proceed to the contractor. There's a significant amount of lead time that's involved in being able to get the equipment to do this work. And so one of the questions that I had for the city attorney was from the perspective is that if we move forward with the last item on the agenda tonight, which is the resolution for acquisition and potentially condemnation, can the city proceed with at least an award to the contractor so that they can start acquiring the materials so that we can get this project done this summer during the construction season? Because the project, from the standpoint of needing the federal warrants, was done way back in 2019. And I think for the betterment of the citizens that are using that particular intersection, that go to Buc-E's or live in the apartments or the residential commercial businesses that are on the east side, obviously, it would be beneficial to get that work done this year. So that's a question I have with the city attorney from the perspective of whether, if we have to go with condemnation, whether we can proceed with an award to allow at least materials to get awarded or.
Mr. Dillan.
The state law says that we can start, we can enter the property and start work on the property after the appraisers have determined their award and after we've paid that amount of the award into the court, which I'd estimate, in this case, might be about 60, 60, 70 days from the time that we file, file in court.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. Item D-1, Ordinance 1912, an ordinance to amend Chapter 205 zoning ordinance, Article 36, having to do with off-street parking, the applicant's the city of Papillion. Is there a council member to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. D-2, Ordinance 1922, an ordinance to amend Section 16629, cutting curbs of Article 3, curbs and gutters, of Chapter 166 Streets and Sidewalk Regulations with the Pay and Municipal Code, having to do with adoption of regulations for driveway and on-street parking location design and construction, the applicant's city of Papillion, is driveway and on-street parking regulations amendment. Councilmember to introduce? Councilman Glover. Item D-3, Ordinance 1923, an ordinance to amend Section 205208(c) of Article 33 Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with accessory uses for civic use types, the applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a council member to introduce? Councilman Jaworski. Item D-4, Ordinance 1924, an ordinance to amend, one, Table 20538, Committed Uses Table of Article 4 Zoning District Regulations with the Pay and Municipal Code, to allow multifamily residential in the CC Commercial District by special use permit, and two, Section 20589 Site Regulations of Article 14 Community Commercial District, to adopt site regulation for multifamily residential. The applicant is Collective Development, care of Max Honker, multifamily in the Commercial District. Is there a council member to introduce?
Oh.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item D-5, Ordinance 1925, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 117, to amend the number of allowable fireworks permits based on population and to create a scoring process for the selections of licensees. Councilmember to introduce? Councilman Jaworski, I mean Gaines, I'm sorry. Councilman Gaines introduces. Item D-6, Ordinance 1926, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 117, to provide for clarification of who can perform work related to the issuance of the fireworks permit and require an affidavit stating compliance. Councilmember to introduce? Councilman Stube. Item F-1, Resolution R 210025, a resolution to approve an amendment to the master fee schedule pertaining to fees associated with amended summer fireworks sales applications. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 210025? Motion by Councilman Clute. If you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do you have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. F-2, Resolution R 210027, a resolution to approve a truck route map and list pursuant to Pay and Municipal Code, Section 19022. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 210027? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. F-3, a resolution to approve a waiver, Resolution R 210028, a resolution to approve a waiver allowing the use of an alternate truck route by Edwin Yocum. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 210028?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Clute. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I think this is important that we recognize that Mr. Yocum's been operating, business out of that location for probably longer than a lot of us have been alive, so I think this is warranted.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Ms. Clute.
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. I think it's important to know this, as Councilman Sunday said, that he's been here a long time. I also feel like Mr. Yocum goes out of his way to help the city on different issues, to lend his expertise and works with us fair and reasonably when we have specific construction jobs that we need his assistance for. So as a citizen of our community, I really do believe this is more than justified.
Yeah, I think he even came to the table and helped do a slight improvement to one of the, one of the intersections to support this waiver as well. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. Item F-4, Resolution R 210031, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve an application for moving a building or structure permit to move one building from its current location of 12101 South 72nd Street in Papillion to its future location at 224 Missouri River Road in Bellevue. The applicant is Steve Hurlboot, and this is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. If you want to say something, you can, otherwise, I just want to make sure you're acknowledged.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have motion to approve Resolution R 210031, motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Clute.
Yes.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
Yeah.
8A0A.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item F-5, Resolution R 210034, a resolution to declare the necessity and approve the acquisition by condemnation if necessary of certain private property at the northwest corner of 72nd Street and Applewood Drive for a traffic signal. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 210034?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? If you state your name for the record.
Sure.
Welcome.
Edward Winger, Walnut Creek, could you just clarify whose property you're installing and what purpose of this for people that don't know?
Yep. There's two small pieces. So 72nd and Applewood Drive, there's a traffic signal that is warranted to be put in there. And to put it in, so the equipment needs to be placed, so we're talking about the corporal corners. One piece is a small piece from Buc-E's, the new Buc-E's gas station, and then the other one is the Meridian Apartments, a small piece there. And so condemnation, the process is, we go and get a commercial appraisal from a certified appraiser, so it's not like we just take the land. We go out into the market to a certified appraiser, and we get, we get from them, what do they determine the actual market value that land is? And then there's a process to offer and negotiate with the landowner. In the case of Buc-E's, they have agreed to sell the rights to that small piece based on the appraisal price. And in the case of Meridian Apartments, they have not agreed. They want a much higher price than the appraisal price. And so then, from a council perspective, what the decision needs to be is, do we want to pay an inflated price for the rights of that? Or do we want to pay the commercial rate? So thinking of what's right for the taxpayers. And so if the council determines that it does not want to pay the inflated price, but we still need access to that to put in that life, then that's where eminent domain process comes into play, to determine what is the appropriate value. And there's a process then where the other party gets an appraiser, we have our appraiser, they're kind of compared. If there's still a disagreement, then those appraisers can get a third one, and there's a process to determine what is the fair value, and that's part of the eminent domain process. And then whatever that fair value is determined by the courts, that's what we end up paying. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it's a delayed prison and wary of eminent domain and the, I don't know, the machinations of how this works. So I guess they don't have a choice at the end of the day.
They, they have a choice to, if it's determined that it's needed for a public purpose, like to enable the lights, we have a right through the legislature granted us the right to acquire that land for that public use. The question then becomes, what's the value of that? And what do we pay for that? And then that's the process with the appraisers and the courts.
So they get some money, it's just at your valuation, not theirs.
Oh, they'll definitely get paid at commercial value, it's just the question of what is that price? Absolutely.
Fair.
Yeah, you bet.
Mayor.
That was a good question, because I think some people perceive that eminent domain is we take land and they don't get reimbursement, so it's kind of like a stealing and a taking. It's more of a negotiation of what's the appropriate price. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I think you mentioned something that I think is important to recognize. This is public use, and that's part of the reason why I tried to bring up it earlier, what relative to the traffic signal being installed there. Currently, it's just stop control. So we put a traffic signal and allows access for all four directions. Obviously, if people drive on 72nd Street, they know how busy that intersection is. And like I said, almost two years ago, the federal regulations identify that that signal is warranted at that location, so the city's been moving forward with that. The reason why I asked the city attorney with regard to the time involved in that, because of the fact that it takes a long time for this project to be done. And I think if we've had a certified appraiser, if we've gone out and communicated with the property owner, and we're talking about, I think, less than 300 square feet of property that needs to be utilized, and I think right now, today, this is just a landscape area. It has nothing to do with any parking, it has nothing to do with their buildings, essentially, it's right at the corner, it's currently landscaped today. And if we can't get any movement with regard to that property owner, I would like the city to move as quickly as possible to proceed with condemnation. to move as quickly as possible to proceed with condemnation. Granted, I don't like to do it, but I think in this particular case, just because of the fact that it is public use, it is warranted that we should move forward with condemnation.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Eimer.
Well, I think, and the city attorneys are correct me by wrong, but two, two other things to think about, you mentioned the mayor, we're responsible for taxpayers' dollars. And so, with that responsibility goes along with the fact that if a certified appraiser says it's worth X amount of dollars, it's hard for me to justify paying a far higher price than what an appraiser's telling it's worth, using tax dollars to do it with. That's not fair to taxpayers. That's just being good stewards of, of the money. And also, if I'm not mistaken, even though we're starting this condemnation process tonight, that doesn't preclude the property owners from still coming back to us saying, we'll go ahead and take your appraisal and settle without having to go to court and go through condemnation. As Councilman Stube said, this is just so we can get it going, but they always have the option to come to us and settle it before it ever gets to that point.
Yeah, I, I understand talking ethereal and consumptual terms, I just think that the, the concept of public good and public works and some government appraisal sounds quite overbearing to a little. Yeah, it's just my own hangup, so appreciate, I don't know Meridian, I don't know those guys, but if I were them, I'd be kind of ticked, so thank you. You bet. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm fully aware that in many instances, the words eminent domain strike fear in the people, and it's a bad thing by some people's eyes. And certainly, if a city, you know, the big bad government is going in and taking somebody's house, taking somebody's property that they have some of this emotional connection with, I, you know, I've seen, I've seen the movies, I've seen the TV shows where that's happening. And yeah, that's a situation where we really have to think long and hard on whether we use our power to do that. Then on the other hand, when somebody owns a property, you know, 27 foot by 10 foot, what we talked about, on the corner of two busy streets, and it's, if we don't have eminent domain, they then are able to hold the city hostage and force the price up and get a windfall from the taxpayers if we don't use eminent domain. So, I've long seen that, well, eminent domain is just one of those balances that come into play, that the private property owner has a lot of, lot of rights that we ought to protect. On the other hand, they can't use those rights to, to, you know, to get the windfall and to screw around the rest of the city with the public. And so, you know, this is an instance where, to my mind, it's real easy to say, hold on here, buddy, all we're really doing is talking about price, and we're going to go use the court system to get the fair price. In many other instances, like the TV shows and stuff like that, eminent domain is something that, yeah, I would spend a lot of time thinking about it, just as I think you would.
But they didn't know the value or the potential value of it when they invest in that property.
Man, this is an argument about what they lose or what they don't lose.
Right, they're a citizen, they're an investor in that land, and so they, they purchased that with the idea that they would get a valuation at some point in the future, and so they're...
Right, and that's the reason we go get commercial certified appraisers to determine what is that commercial value, so there is a remuneration for the, you know, macro value.
And I, you know, I, my career led me to win, to watch all, ended up making lawsuits many times. And you know what it is? It is not unusual to go through that process. An inventory, we have a whole thing, other people make that decision. It's not unusual for the property owner to end up getting bored through that process that was being offered officially. So it does work to their advantage, but...
But you say it's just landscaping, right? It's not like an excuse that you get to decide whether their value, whether their property's worth something because of not being used for a certain purpose, right? That's, that's up to them.
Well, I mean, we both use professional appraisers.
They're not government appraisers, they're certified commercial, like a bank would use or a realtor would use. And, and this is not a, this is not a hill to die on it. I assume they know, they're not here, right? I assume they know that this is beyond, right? And so, I, I'm not here to point out for them, but like, I, I hope that we have more conversations about this in the future when these things happen, so I'm just kind of like, forward to the game, so.
You bet. Thank you, thanks. Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I, I too am usually opposed to this. I, I think this particular case, I'm with Mr. Mungar. This is a legitimate use for the public. It, it does improve both the transportation flow and the safety in our community. It is not a substantial hardship on this landowner. It is just a sliver of a corner, that's all it is. And I would point out that Meridian Apartments has enjoyed the growth of our community over the years in their business model, and what we're doing here does not affect their business model either way. I mean, it probably improves their business model in that there's a better traffic flow in and out of those apartments once these traffic signals are there. So, having said all that, if the price that our appraisers come up with is not fair, and I would, I would allow that that's possible, there is a process that they can, you know, they can take to, to, to get the fair price, whatever that may be. I don't know what it is. But I do believe that the city's acting fairly here, the city's bent over backwards to try to, to work this out without the need to do what we're doing tonight, but I'm going to support this.
Any other council discussion?
The only thing I want to touch on that too is basically, that land's already landscaped, and I don't believe we're even going to touch that landscape. Alls we're going to do is take a little piece of corner, that they're going to benefit out of this to where they're getting some money out of it, opposed to it's just sitting there and nothing being done, and it's going to improve everybody, it's going to improve the gas station, all the businesses there, the apartments, so it's a win-win for them, they just don't realize it.
Any other counsel? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Clu.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Eimer.
Motion passes. All the regular agenda items, committee reports, public works. Mr. Eimer.
Thank you, Mayor. The public works meeting met prior to the council meeting tonight with only one real agenda item, and that was to have a follow-up discussion with staff on public improvements that seconded North Jefferson in that general area. We received some information from the city engineer regarding a completed traffic study, and some options, as it applies to any improvements in traffic flow in the second North Jefferson area. We also had some discussion about having consolidated trash pickup location in that area to help clean up and improve the area. We also discussed general improvements in the area and gave the staff direction on improvement along Second Street, East Second Street, and addition, some improvements in parking and repairs on North Jefferson as well. I think the direction was, or not, I think the direction was to the staff to proceed with the traffic collection portion over first, because that needs to be completed to see if there's interest, then from that point on, we'll explore some gradual improvements in the area, and that will include, once the weather gets above zero, we're going to do it tonight. We'll take a walking tour down there to identify some improvements and work with the business owners in the area, and that's where we are at this point.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, any council comments? Main things the last couple of weeks have just been legislative things. United Cities, we meet every Monday morning, just to get an update on the legislature. Again, with legislature in session on the way they've restructured things with COVID, it's very fast-moving down there. There's, sometimes it's only about 24 hours notice that there may be a hearing, and there's a limited amount of time to prepare and, and go down and testify if we're going to do that. So we've taken positions on almost everything we've had of interest, because all the bills now have been introduced. We've looked through all of the bills, tried to understand which ones affect the city, and then there's, some we're doing nothing on. Basically, our three statuses that we've got is, we just want to monitor it, it's something that we've got of interest, but we don't know if it's a good or bad thing, so we want to actively monitor it. There are some where we want to actively support, and that would then mean writing a letter of support, reaching out to the senators, maybe even going down and testifying. And then there's some where we want to oppose, and the same thing, we actually want to write a letter of opposing it and why, and get into the dialogue and help influence that legislation. And so we've taken all of those stands. If you have questions on any of those, let us know. And again, with the United Cities, all five cities have to be in agreement to take a stance. There, there could be a case where the four largest, Bellevue, Papillion, and this state, Retna, all want to take a certain position, and then Springfield says, no, we don't take the position, it has to be unanimous. And if the United Cities does not take a position, that doesn't mean Papillion itself can't, we're still autonomous and can take our own position. And then at the same time, the League of Municipalities is out there, we're trying to represent cities across Nebraska, and they take positions as well. So that weekly meetings to kind of coordinate all of that and understand then where are we going to put our resources and our time and monitor. So, if there are bills that you have of interest, let us know. This last week, I would just give a thanks again to Mr. Sturzma, Mr. Thielen, and probably Chief Lyons. There was a bill that Mr. Sturzma went down, and he's done a lot of work on related SIDs. There's a couple of senators that have put in a bill to eliminate SIDs, and you know enough how much we deal with them in there, but that's probably due to our development. And I think the, a lot of people in the industry, I think, view Papillion as a leader in how to use them appropriately, and Mr. Sturzma's an expert. In fact, I think he's probably quoted a number of times in other people's testimony down there today. So Mark, thank you for going down to Lincoln and representing us down there. Mr. Thielen has spent a tremendous amount of work. There's another bill that's trying to change some of the economic incentive programs where the local sales tax gets a rebate in back. And there's a bill that's being introduced to make some changes to what had previously been negotiated, and Papillion was able to get into those discussions. And so, the city of Lincoln, city of Omaha, and city of Papillion really have been the leaders in trying to define what's the appropriate amendments to those bills to watch out for our interest. And Mr. Thielen's been doing, I mean, been doing a lot of work the last week to 10 days on that, and I think that was a fair act of, so thank you, Ellen, for your expertise there. And then, with everything that's going on nationally around policing, there's a lot of bills in the legislature about policing, and again, Papillion, I think, is seen as a leader in modern policing practices, and Chief Lyons has been very involved in those discussions as well. So I just want to thank all of them for all of their work related to legislature. Anything else? Couple of reminders, the FNA Committee has a meeting next council meeting at 5:30. Municipal Facilities Corporation has a meeting next, at 6:30 next Tuesday on the second, and both of those are just before the next city council meeting, so you should be seeing those agenda items. Anything else?
Mayor, could you, could you share with the public a little bit about your discussion with Tim Burke at OPBD?
About what?
The power hobbages?
Oh, I'll share what I know, and I may ask Mr. Thompson to weigh in if he knows anything or I'm wrong. And some of this is just, we're not in the midst of it, so some of this is just our basic understanding. So Nebraska's a public power state, and they're broken into regions, and this area is Omaha Public Power District, OPBD. So we all use OPBD. The region, the different power systems in the region, though, have joined, and I don't know when it occurred, a number of years ago, joined a larger regional organization. Southwest Power Pool is what it's called. And the Southwest Power Pool, I think, covers from probably Minnesota to Texas, Jeff? Something like that? So it's really the whole center of the United States is the Southwest Power Pool. And anybody who deals with regulated power in that area, for the most part, has joined this consortium. What the, my understanding of the concept is, at a local level, you have ebbs and flow of energy, use and demand, and there's going to be times you're creating more power than you need, but there's also going to be times when you need more power than you're creating. And so what the Southwest Power Pool is, is basically an open marketplace amongst some great parties. So if we are generating, if OPBD is generating too much power, they have a built-in mechanism of where to sell that power so it can be used by somebody else that needs it. And at the same time, if OPBD is short on power, they can go into the Power Pool and buy that power, so it evens out the demand. But because it is a cooperative body trying to control, control demand, that Southwest Power Pool has some authority. And if there is, and every local district is supposed to hold a certain amount of reserve power back for like an emergency, so if it's needed, they can contribute, and I think it's like 14% of their demand or something like that. So if everybody's holding 14% of demand, somebody has an emergency, big spike or an outage, the reserves are there to provide that, and everything still evens out and works. The issue that I understand has been occurring has been the weather down in Texas. Last couple of days, the bitter cold. And some of this, I don't know, I think Texas depends a lot on wind energy, and the wind turbines, I think, have frozen up, and so they're not producing any power into that system. And at the same time, so they, so the power generation's gone down, at the same time